Eileen, I say we kick it off and start out with the opening statement.
Okay, Township of Howell Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, March 14th, 2022, regular meeting. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open adequate notice haven't been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Osbury Park Press and the Tri-Town News. Second, on December 14th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the Clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on December 14th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and a decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For any members of the public wishing to ask questions or comment on an application, you will need to use the Raise Your Hand feature when the chairman opens up the hearing for members of the public. Once you are brought into the meeting, you will need to have both audio and video, and you will be sworn in and required to give your name and address. If you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your, lower your hand, and star six to mute and unmute yourself.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Kanther.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Moretti.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Stanton is excused. Mr. Gonzalez is excused. Chairman Sayah.
Here.
And Chairman Hansen is excused. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, Mr. Bear, can we have a swearing-in of the zoning board professionals, please?
Yes, can you please raise your right hand, zoning board professionals? You swear and affirm the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go.
I do.
When the professionals are sworn.
Thank you, sir.
Or Sayah.
Okay, Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
No minutes tonight.
Thank you. Eileen, any vouchers tonight?
No vouchers tonight.
Okay, Eileen, any correspondence?
I do, I have a letter from the attorney concerning Freehold Welding. They're adjourning the case until March 28th, 2022. They need more time.
March 28th, 2022, with no further notice, is that it?
Uh, no further notice. They spoke to Matthew Howard, so they might have to go for a D2 variance, so they might have to change their application.
Well, I'm just gonna jump in. It's a D1 variance, so you should let Matt know to tell them it's a D1 variance, because if they don't notice for a D1 and they notice for a D2, that could be problematic.
Okay.
Okay, so for the public, anyone that's here to hear case number BA 21-28, Freehold Welding, Inc., that case has been moved to March 28th, 2022, with no further notice. Okay, Eileen, anything else?
Um, the Patterson Family Farm, I have a waiver for the notice to owners. They had a messed-up notice, and I had the resident sign, so I just wanted to let everybody know that that's okay. And the, they're, they're good to go.
Okay.
I mean, Andy, did you look at that?
I did, Jennifer, the, I reviewed that with Eileen and the, it was one household and they, they signed off and wanted, which is, they signed, well, have they, I didn't see what, did they submit something in writing to the, because Eileen was saying they were going to, but I have not seen the writing.
Uh, yes, they did, and both homeowners signed it.
Okay, it was one, it was one household or one address, and they signed off saying they, they approved the meeting going ahead, and that's in conformance with law. There's no issue there.
Okay, anything else, Eileen?
No, that's all for correspondence.
Thank you. Do we have any resolutions?
No resolutions.
Okay, well, then we're gonna go right to the applications before the board. First, case number BA 21-27, David Candell. Description: Application of David Candell as applicant and owner seeking use variance approval with bulk variance to convert the abandoned adult daycare structure into a single-family dwelling. The board engineer is recommending that the separate lots be consolidated with the use, so technical bulk variance relief is required for several existing non-conformities due to the creation of a new lot designation on premises known as Block 183, Lots 102, 101, 1217, State Route 33. Expiration date 31 March, 2022.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Todd Cohen, the attorney for the applicant David Candell. Um, I believe I have three witnesses who I don't see online.
Who do you need in the meeting, Mr. Cohen?
Uh, let's see, Joe Kishuba, Brian Brzinski, and Allison Coffin.
Galvin's the next attorney, right? He has his hand raised. I don't know if you want to bring him in on the meeting? Another way of finding out where does it mean.
Um, Mr. Galvin, for the next application, has his hand raised, so I'm not sure if you want to bring him in the meeting. I'm not sure if he has something to say.
Is that the attorney?
Oh, he is an attorney. I don't know if he's the attorney for the applicant or somebody else, but he is an attorney.
I think he's the attorney for the applicant.
Is that the next application that we're looking at?
Yeah, Mr. Galvin is the listed attorney for Patterson Family Farms in their.
All right, let's, let's hear real quick what he has to say in case they want to move it. You're muted, Mr. Galvin.
You're muted. Yeah, I got it. There you go. Yeah, it's really weird. I can see you, I see you talking, and I can't, I can't, I can't respond. In light of the fact that the board has just six members tonight, we'd like to carry to the next available meeting for us.
Eileen, what, what do we have open?
Hi.
Um, March, March 28th, we have two other applications, and then Freehold Welding, and then April 11th, we have one application.
Mr. Galvin, April 11th work for you?
Uh, yes.
And we'll, we'll need an expiration extension?
Absolutely. We're gonna waive the time which the board has to act, and we would ask that you carry this without requiring us to renotice. I just wanted to point out that the notice mistake was on Seaton Drive. The houses there are 11, 21, and 31, and we sent it, for some reason, to 23. And the post office decided in its wisdom not to deliver it, even though it had people's name on it. So, it was about as small a mistake as we can make, and thankfully, the Lambert's were really, really nice and signed off.
Okay, so we're gonna move the expiration to, to 30 April?
April, to April 11th.
That will move the meeting to, with the, with the expiration of 30 April?
Yes, yes, we're fine with it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Galvin.
Thank you so much.
The audience, members, professionals, case number BA 21-23, the Patterson Family Farm LLC. This case is being carried to April 11th with expiration date 30 April, 2022.
Thank you.
No further.
Am I dismissed?
Yes, you are, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Cohen.
No problem, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you stated before, this application seeks use and bulk variance relief to convert an abandoned adult daycare facility on Route 33 to a single-family residence. I have three witnesses this evening. Joe Kishuba from KBA, who's our engineer, who will introduce the application and address any engineering questions. We have Brian Brzinski from the Grosso Design Group, who's our architect, and will explain the architectural changes and what the building's gonna look like. And we have Allison Coffin, our professional planner, from James W. Higgins and Associates, who will address the variances requested. If we can have the professionals sworn, Andy, I think that'd be a good start.
Sure. Raise your right hand. I guess all professionals, do you swear that the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you go?
Yes, I do.
And I guess individually, starting with Mr. Kishuba, state your name for the record. Spell your last. You're muted.
All right, Joseph Kishuba, K-O-C-I-U-B-A, KBA Engineering Services, Manasquon, New Jersey.
And then Ms. Coffin.
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N, 14 Tilton Drive, Ocean Township, New Jersey.
And then Mr. Brzinski.
Brian Brzinski, B-E-R-Z-I-N-S-K-I-S, owner and architect of Grosso Design Group, Manasquon, New Jersey.
Thank you all. Todd, I think you're ready to go.
Thank you, Andy. We're gonna start with Joe. Joe, if you'd be kind enough to put your professional and educational qualifications on the record.
Certainly. I'm a licensed engineer, licensed in the state of New Jersey, have a master's degree and bachelor's degree from Rowan University in structural and civil engineering. Have performed engineering for 16 years now, and testified before numerous boards, including this one.
We accept Joseph Kishuba's credentials, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Joe. Joe, could you briefly describe the application before the board this evening?
Certainly. So, we have a 0.34-acre lot in the HD3 zone. It is on the north side of Route 33. The lot is 100 feet wide by 150 feet deep. It is conforming in area. It has a lot width of 100 feet. It has an existing structure on the property. Um, the structure historically was a Convalensis home. It was a, consisted of 12 beds and five or six bedrooms. It has been abandoned. I don't know the exact amount of time. I believe five or six years, if I'm not mistaken. Um, historic aerials show that the dwelling and the neighboring structure to the east date back to about the 1940s or earlier. The surrounding area consists of a residential dwelling immediately to the east on Lot 103. To the west is vacant, previously containing a dwelling, which I believe is now owned by the township. Um, I believe part of the structure might still exist there. The Ming Mahone Brook exists to the west, and Four Seasons at Colts Farm further on. To the east is Sutton Trucking, a site that was developed a few years ago, and some residential dwellings in the Mobile Home Park, and across the street is a residence at 1210 Route 33, as well as the nursery and some other commercial uses.
Joe, can I just interrupt you?
Yeah.
The site is not conforming. You have 14, almost 15,000 square feet in a zone that requires 40,000, so the lot is undersized, and you also do not have the adequate frontage. So, you made a comment that the lot was conforming. It is not conforming. It's an undersized lot in the zone.
I apologize. You're correct. 14,999 square feet exists, 40,000 is required, and the frontage is 100 feet, or 150 is required. It also has non-conformities for front yard setback. Um, the front yard setback proposed or required is 60 feet, whereas the existing front yard setback to the porch, proposed porch is 18.7 feet. A setback to the existing canopy there is 12 and a half feet. In addition, the dwelling is at 24.6 feet, all of which is pre-existing non-conforming. And the side yard setback is 5.7 feet, where 25 feet is required. Those are all existing for that structure. The intention is to renovate the existing structure and convert it to a single-family home. The footprint is about 2,400 square feet. The applicant proposes to remove the large front canopy and add a smaller porch to the front of the property. Again, that would be at 18.7 feet, where the existing canopy is at 12.5. Um, the proposed coverage, building coverage and building height will all conform. Existing driveway will be reutilized. A small K-turn area will be added towards the front of the driveway to allow for vehicles to not have to back out onto Route 33 as they have to currently. We do show a location of a septic. Septic on this site was addressed back in about 2014, and it's sized appropriately for the number of bedrooms. Um, and that's about it. Again, the, the intention is to renovate the existing one-story structure and reutilize it as a single-family residence.
Okay, well, if that's it, I would ask Charlie, before we move forward, do you have anything that you could share with us?
Yeah, so I think what was alluded to in, I guess, the opening statement for the application. So, I believe it's two separate lots that are part of the application, Lot 101 and 102, if I'm not mistaken. And we asked as a condition of approval that, you know, the lots be consolidated with the use on the property. So, there are a couple of what we call technical variances in our review letter, mainly the side yard setback to the east. I'm gonna just share my screen real quick so the board can get acquainted with, hold on a second here, let me see if I can move this. Okay, can you see my screen?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this is exhibit, let me make sure I got the right one here. Uh, I think six, so A6 is the variance plan that was submitted. So, there's an existing one-story frame structure on the property. Um, to the east side yard, there's an existing setback of 5.7 feet. So, we cite it as needing a technical variance, because the lots are being consolidated. We're creating a new lot with a consolidation. So, it's an existing condition, but it's a technical variance. Also, as Jen pointed out, obviously, they are still non-conforming with the lot area. 40,000 is required in the zone. They're just under 15,000 square feet. The consolidation is making the lot, you know, a little bit more conforming, and then same thing with the frontage. I believe 150 is required. They're at 100 feet, which is essentially exist, existing. Along the front side of the property, I'll just show the outbound survey for the property. Um, this is exhibit seven, A7. There's a covered front porch that extends the full width of the front of the existing structure that's out there. The applicant is proposing to remove the entirety of that covered front porch and is proposing a slightly smaller front porch, which requires a variance, because it is in the front yard setback. Um, what is it? 60 feet is required in the HD3 zone, so they're actually improving the condition. The existing porch, I believe, is approximately 18.7 feet from the Route 33 front property line. The applicant is moving it back, so it's 18.7 feet, and then it's also not the full width of the structure. It's only, you know, 17 feet wide versus the, I don't know if there's a dimension on here. Uh, yeah, I can't find it, but it's, it's being significantly reduced, but it still needs a front yard setback. One comment that Mr. Kishuba did make regarding the septic, he said that the applicant had gotten an approval for the septic in 2014. I'll just note that the Monmouth County Board of Health issued a memo saying that, per their records, with the prior use that existed on there, the Convalensis home, they had sewage backing up from the septic system onto the property, and they asked that the board as a condition of approval that the applicant have to come in and get a new approval for a designed septic system for, for four bedrooms. Todd, does the applicant have any issue with complying with that?
No, the applicant will comply with that, and obviously, the lot consolidation as well.
Okay, um, they also need technical relief from curb and sidewalk along the property frontage. Um, obviously, Route 33 is a state roadway, so any curb and sidewalk would be subjected NJDOT. What I will say, if you look at, this is Google Earth, 20, I think most current aerial, I don't know if it has a date on the bottom here. I think it's probably 2020 aerial. You can see, it doesn't look like there's any curb or sidewalk along the adjacent property frontage. However, I will note that this application was submitted after the township re-updated or re-adopted its sidewalk trust fund ordinance. So, any granting of the relief of sidewalk along the property frontage, the applicant would need to make a mandatory contribution to the sidewalk trust fund. Todd, would the applicant have issue with that if the board were to grant relief for that requirement?
Charlie, before we get there, I just want to state, let's not forget, we required Secudus to put in sidewalk along 33. And if we're trying to, I mean, Mr. Sayah, I think that was your requirement that they provide sidewalks. So, I don't want to be so quick to say we're not gonna require it, because it's gotta start somewhere, and if we're requiring it for one on 33, we need to consider the fact that perhaps we should start the sidewalk network somewhere. So, I mean, I'm gonna leave it to the board, but at the end of the day, we, that was a big issue on the Secudus application, that Mr. Sayah wanted the sidewalk along 33. So, I defer to the board with respect to whether they want it or not.
Yeah, so just to clarify for the board as well, Mr. Sayah, so it's, it's one or the other. So, if the board decides to grant a relief, the applicant has to make the contribution. If they don't grant their relief, the applicant has to put it in. So, it's not, it's no longer where you can grant the waiver and they don't have to make a contribution. So, it's, it's put it in or make the contribution if the board grants the waiver, so. Um, and then, just if I can add on to two, let's see if I can share the correct exhibit here. So, as far as lot coverage, I think the HD3 permits a maximum of 70%. The applicant's calculation was around 30%, so they don't need relief for building or impervious coverage. My question would be for Mr. Kishuba. You can kind of see, there's a pseudo turnaround in the back of the site here in a fairly long driveway. Um, you know, what exactly is the applicant's need for this K-turnaround up the front here, when you have one in the back? And certainly seems like there's some room to park additional vehicles on, in the driveway there.
There's certainly room for substantial amount of vehicles. The, the problem with the turnaround is when somebody is pulled into the driveway towards the rear, it's not really usable. So, we felt that one towards the front would be more usable. We are actually reducing coverage by eliminating that front porch and reducing it substantially. Uh, so the impervious coverage is actually, or lot coverage is being reduced as a result. Uh, you know, if, if we feel that that turnaround is the more appropriate, I don't think the applicant has a substantial concern, but i- in my opinion, and having pulled onto this driveway, I thought a K-turn closer to Route 33 would just be a little easier to utilize.
Yes, I, I mean, for the, for the board, Mr. Sayah and board members, you know, my kind of question or concern might be with the turnaround up. So, you know, a lot of times that ends up being a parking area. You know, I know this is a residential use, but, um, you know, what, what kind of look does that have, like, on the Route 33? Maybe the board might want to talk about whether any, like, you know, evergreen plantings or something, or some shrubs, just to, you know, to, to give some screening, might be warranted around there. Um, or, you know, if it could be relocated further back into the site, you know, that might be something where you don't need the evergreen landscaping. You know, it's just pushing it back a little bit further to kind of keep the parking off the, you know, the, the Route 33 corridor, so it's not in the front yard area. Um, and then also, along that note, obviously, Route 33 is a, a state roadway. They do have a desired typical section, which sometimes extends beyond the public right-of-way. Um, I just asked that the applicant, as any, as a condition of any board approval, that be depicted on the site plan? And, and what that desirable typical section is, is, you know, 30 years from now, it's ideally what the DOT would like to widen the roadway for future purposes, you know, as traffic volumes increase. So, we don't want to, you know, permit or, you know, allow improvements within that desired typical section that might, you know, create a burden for the applicant at a later point in time if they had to relocate it. Um, parking, I'll say the proposed architectural plan, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Brzinski get into a little bit more, but, uh, the applicant's proposing, I believe, a total of four bedrooms. RSIS requires, I believe, three parking spaces. Uh, you know, I'll let Mr. Kishuba, you know, pine further, but you can see, he's already shown two 9x18 parking stalls, but it looks like there is considerable distance with this driveway into the site where it can accommodate more than that. So, I really don't take exception to the parking that's provided. Also note that, um, you know, this is technically a used variance, because it's a residential use in the HD3 zone, which is not permitted. Um, you know, we see a lot of these where it's used variances, where the applicants have to provide, um, you know, a buffer, you know, commercial to residential and the like along these corridors of, of, you know, Route 33 and Route 9. I'll just point out that there is no buffering requirement as far as like a 50-foot buffer, because the lot is under one area current size. Um, so there is no requirement on that end. Um, as far as the septic system on the back, there's a barbecue structure as long, along with getting the Monmouth County Board of Health approval. That's either gonna need to be relocated to a conforming location or eliminated as part of the application. Um, as far as public utilities, I put an inquiry into the engineering department. There is no public sewer available along Route 33, so within a considerable distance from the site. So, there's no, you know, ability to tie it to public sewer. They are proposing to connect it to the public water main through New Jersey American Water. I just asked that as a condition of any approval, the applicant obviously has to get any road opening and state permits for that to make the connection. Um, any wells on the site, I just, if it's not for irrigation purposes, Monmouth County Board of Health typically requires that be abandoned. So, I asked that that be a condition of any approval. And then as far as the plan itself, I have a number of items is indicated in the plot section in the report that need to be corrected on the plan, because some, there's conflicting information in this, in the zoning table. Um, you know, and, and just on the plan in general. Mr. Kishuba, have you reviewed my letter, and do you think you can address all those as a condition of any board approval?
Oh, certainly.
Uh, that's really all I have, Mr. Sayah. I'll let Jen chime in if she has anything from a planning perspective.
I, I don't have anything for Mr. Kishuba. I know that, um, Allison Coffin is here to provide the planning testimony, so I would prefer to defer my comments until after she has an opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Jen. Thank you, Charlie. So, I think I'll open it up to the board members to ask Mr. Kishuba any questions that they may have. I'll start with you, Mr. Kanther.
Sorry, had to get myself off mute. I have no question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Moretti?
No, sir, none.
Mr. Hughes?
Uh, just one quick one. Charlie had mentioned about over on the septic, I'm looking at on the screen here about the barbecue. I mean, is that something that we are gonna find out now, it's being moved or removed?
No objection or movement.
Okay, beautiful. That's it. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yep.
Mr. Mertens?
This question, I don't know who would be able to answer it, but I do need the site plan that Charlie
This question, I don't know who would be able to answer it, but I do need the site plan that Charlie had. Uh, to to, so so everybody can understand my question. I kind of concur with Jennifer as far as the sidewalks. We got to start somewheres, but on this plan, I see a concrete walk in the front. Now, where would the sidewalk go? Because I mean, that's going to be kind of.
The sidewalk would be in the right of way, so it'd be on the other side of the property line.
Okay, so that wouldn't, it wouldn't look stupid having two. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Did we touch all the board members? Yes, we did. Okay. So, Mr. Cohen? Back over to you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure. Were you talking to me?
Yes.
I'm having a hard time hearing. Everybody sounds muffled to me. Uh, I couldn't hear Andy or you, really.
Andy didn't say anything, and so they're asking you to move on to your next witness.
Good. That would be the architect. Uh, Brian Brazinski. Brian, you there?
Yes, I am.
Good.
Um, we'd ask that Brian put his credentials on the record, please.
Yes, I will. So my name is Brian Brazinski. I'm the architecter and owner of Brasso Design Group in Madison Square, New Jersey. I've been a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. And I went to school at NJIT and got my degree in architecture. And I've been testifying in front of other boards, except I don't believe I've been in front of this board in the past.
Hey, Brian. Well, we'll accept your credentials, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Cohen?
What the site looks like today, and then what, and maybe you can show your screens, you can show the board what it's going to look like eventually. I mean, you've got any exhibits you'd like.
Of course, I can do that. So the the existing um, the existing property today, as I bring up the architectural plan. Um, as mentioned earlier, was utilized as an adult daycare. So the uh floor plan configuration will include several changes to the layout. But for the most part, we stay within the existing footprint of the structure. So while looking at the existing floor plan, there were already a series of bedrooms and bathrooms that were located throughout the structure. But the structure itself hasn't been utilized in some time, so it definitely needs some updating. So coming into the internals of the proposed structure. What we did is we actually um tried to keep most of everything in a similar location for ease and convenience of construction. But the existing footprint that goes around the perimeter, most importantly, stays the same. The only change on the footprint, as mentioned earlier as well, is the fact that we removed a existing front overhang. That was the entire width of the structure and I believe projected much further out than what we're proposing as the current overhang. Over the front of the entry door today. Um, otherwise, throughout the rest of the floor plan, we have accommodated four bedrooms. And uh, two and a half bathrooms in the design, very similar to what is there today. Um, the other main change, as we stay within the existing footprint, would be to the roof line of the structure. Because the existing roof structure already contains some issues, um, being a mainly flat roof structure. And in the application of obviously converting it over to something more residential in nature. We have revised the exterior elevation to now include a pitched or peaked roof over the main structure. As well as over that front porch entry area. This will hopefully alleviate a lot of the water issues that existed from the flat roof structure. And as, you know, as it looks aesthetically from the exterior, become a little bit more residential than the current look that's there today.
Mr. Brazinski, if I can, I apologize if I mispronounced your last name, but if I could just ask a clarifying question. So it's, you're not, the applicant's not proposing to raise the structure, right? Though the walls are staying and they're going to be reciting it, it's just they're taking the flat roof and converting it to, uh, I guess, uh, what do you call it? Is that a gable with like a dormer, I guess, on the side there, kind of?
Yeah, so the the existing structure is not being raised, the the existing footprint, where the location of all the exterior walls are staying the same. We're basically going to come in and put the new peak gable roof over top of the existing structure that's there today. For the purpose of the roof drainage, as well as for the purpose of the residential look.
So I just wanted to make that clear for the board because there's uh definitely a distinction distinction from a land use perspective. When you knock down a structure voluntarily and then propose a new structure on that lot, you know, that's undersized. So this is an existing structure that they're rehabilitating, they're not knocking down and building a structure from scratch. And then uh, Mr. Brazinski, i- if I could just share my screen just for thirty seconds, I just also want to show something for the board. So this is Google Earth street view imagery of the site currently. So I think that's an important aspect for the board to see of what this is, street view imagery as of July twenty twenty-one. So uh, you know, you're going from a dilapidated structure, you know, with a canopy that's falling down. With a flat roof that looks like it hasn't been, you know, maintained to something that's being visually and architecturally enhanced. Um, you know, obviously, it's it's a used variance, but they're they're certainly upgrading the structure on the site to make it more visually appealing. So um, that's all I have for the moment, and I'll let you go back to your screen, Mr. Brazinski.
Thank you, Charlie. Well, no, I mean, that you bring up a a good point. Obviously, the structure that exists there today. I'm not going to say that necessarily looks commercial, but the flat roof doesn't help. Um, so aesthetically, when we were revising it, bringing in a different roof structure was key for water management as well as aesthetics.
Any questions of the architect?
Jen?
No, I agree with Charlie. I think this is a drastic improvement of the aesthetics of that structure um over what has been there for quite a while. And so, you know, plus the reduction in the porch, I think is a benefit as well. So I have no, I have no comments.
Okay. Charlie?
Uh, yeah, just one last thing. So um, with the covered front porch, I think there's like a small uh like masonry wall. Kind of just underneath that, is that staying or is that getting taken out with the the porch as well?
I believe that's to be removed because I think that mimics the uh, the old overhang.
Okay. That's all I have for the architect, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So, board members, we'll start with you, Mr. Mertens.
I'm good. I think it's a nice design, a much better improvement, so I'm good.
Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Roscoe, you are muted.
I'm okay.
Okay, good. Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, I'm, I agree with uh what Mr. Martin said, it's, looks nice. So no, no questions.
Mr. Moretti?
I agree with Mr. Hughes and Mr. Martin. What's there now compared to what's going to be there is a great improvement.
Okay, last but not least, Mr. Cantor.
Yeah, quite obviously, what's going there, or what they proposed to put there is much nicer than what's there now. Mu- much better benefit to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Cantor.
And I'm sure the neighbors are going to appreciate it.
Thank you, board members. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir.
Back over to you, sir.
Okay, we have one more witness, uh, our planner, Allison Coffin. Uh, Allison, you've been sworn. Uh, if you please put your educational and professional qualifications as a planner on the record.
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree from Boston College. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, and I'm certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners. I have appeared here uh quite a few times over the last fifteen years.
Yes, you have, Allison. We accept your credentials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison, could you please address the uh, the used variance request and the bulk variances that the applicant is seeking this evening?
Sure, the property that we're looking at is approximately fifteen thousand square feet, just a hair under that. It has frontage on Route thirty-three and it consists of two tax lots that can be consolidated. The site is currently developed with a single building that had contained an adult daycare. The applicant is proposing to renovate the building and convert it for use as a single-family dwelling. And this property is located in the HD three highway development zone. Uh, single-family dwellings aren't permitted. The permitted uses include offices for business, professional, medical, government, or educational services. Financial institutions, retail sales and services. Healthcare facilities and medical centers, restaurants with or without drive-through facilities. Age-restricted, single-family residences as part of a development on minimum forty-acre tracts. Adult daycare facilities, a health club, facilities and fitness centers, microbreweries. Indoor recreation and schools, um, commercial schools. A lot of those uses are very hard to fit on a lot of this size. Uh, the conversion of this site for the uses of single-family residence, however, does require a D one use variance, as that's not a permitted use in the zone. Uh, it should be noted that where a single-family dwelling is a pre-existing use, it's considered a permitted use in the zone. Uh, where it predates the ordinance, but it's subject to the R four bulk standards. There is some variance relief uh related to the size of the lot, um, the area, the frontage. And the existing front yard and side yard are non-conforming. Uh, we're not changing the lot area except through lot consolidation, which creates one single lot as opposed to two. Uh, undersized lots, and we're improving the lot frontage with the consolidation. Uh, we're improving the front yard setback with the modification to the porch, and there's no change to the side yard setback. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested variances. The variances can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. The general welfare in this case is advanced due to the fact that the proposed use advances the purposes of the municipal land use law. And that this site is particularly suited to the proposed use. The subject site is substantially undersized for the zone, having just under fifteen thousand square feet in a zone, which requires forty thousand square feet. This small size makes the site ill-suited to the permitted commercial uses. Uh, which would require commercial parking facilities, which would be extremely difficult to fit on this lot without substantial variance relief. Uh, relative to that parking lot. The subject site is located in an area of Route thirty-three that is developed with a mix of uses, including commercial, like the veterinary hospital, tailor fence. So the quick check up the other way, the welding supply in the nursery and residential. There's single family, there's the the mobile home park, and then we have the Toll Brothers and K-How developments that are under construction. The proposed single-family dwelling is, in my opinion, an appropriate use for this undersized lot uh in this area. The requested D variances can be granted without detriment. Uh, there's no detriment to this use variance. The subject site cannot easily be used for the permitted uses. And uh, the adjacent lot is developed with a single-family home. The proposed home would not harm this neighbor. The proposed home would not generate excessive traffic, noise, or other detriment that would harm the public. As to those bulk variances, they can also be granted without detriment. The lot area and front and side yard setbacks are existing conditions um that are being improved through the consolidation or not altered. And with regard to the side yard setback, and that front yard setback is slightly improved as a result of decreasing the size of the porch. Uh, the proposed variances would not, in their totality, impair the intent and purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. The subject size is extremely undersized for the zone. It cannot easily accommodate the majority of permitted uses. And the proposed use makes efficient and appropriate use of this unique undersized parcel. And the proposed use is in character of the neighborhood. Uh, so for those reasons, it's my opinion that the proposal satisfies both the positive and the negative criteria for the requested variances. But they can be granted without detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the general public. And the application would result in an improvement to the site in a manner which is consistent with the intent of both the master plan and the development ordinance. And also would provide us a significant aesthetic benefit to the area.
Wow, Miss Coffin, that was a lot. But that, very well. Um, Ms. Bean?
I I actually, shockingly, don't have anything to say. I think that the testimony was pretty comprehensive. I agree, the site is significantly undersized. I think this is going to make a significant improvement in the area. So, you know, I take no exception to the testimony uh provided.
Thank you. Mr. Cunliffe? Relative to um.
The, yeah, Mr. Say, the only thing that I'll add from an engineering perspective, and we heard it on some other prior applications, is the Route thirty-three with the commercial with H three. You know, one of the things that discourages or or kind of, you know, slows down commercial development there is the lack of public sewer. You know, and then also small lot sizes and the ability to actually put septic systems in for commercial uses. So, you know, being that the lot is so undersized, you know, to try to put a commercial use conforming on this lot. You know, would almost, you know, it'd be very difficult to put in a septic system on this size lot and actually put in, you know, s- a substantial commercial use on on the property. So I think for this instance, what we're seeing is is a, you know, appropriate reuse of the of the property.
Thank you, sir. Uh, board members, any, from Miss Coffin, um, Mr. Mertens?
No, actually, uh, she's nailed it, you know, I, she didn't have a hard case tonight, so she got the night off.
Thank you, Mr. Roscoe. You're good?
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mr. Hughes?
All good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cantor?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Moretti?
Nice presentation.
Okay, well.
Say, I think the only thing you have to decide is whether you want them to put in the sidewalks or you're okay with them contributing to the sidewalk fund. It's important to understand that just because they contribute to the fund, doesn't mean the sidewalk is going to be put in there. The town can use the sidewalk fund to to put in sidewalks anywhere.
Thank you, Jen. All right, so we should open this up to public. So that any of the members of the public can ask questions of the professionals and the testimony that's on the record. Can I have a motion open up the public?
Make that motion.
Mr. Moretti? Mr. Hughes? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Eileen?
The meeting will now open to public. If you are calling in, you could press star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute and unmute yourselves.
I see that we have three attendees. Um, you know. We'll give them a chance if they want to ask any questions. David, Kelly Carey, and Scuba Girl?
Scared away.
Uh, you know, that's why they're here.
No one has raised their hand as yet.
Okay, Eileen, you know, it looks like there is no, no one really wanting to uh. To ask any questions, so then I'll, I'll ask for a motion to close the public.
Motion to close the public.
Do we have a second? The Cantor, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Bear, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, the board is familiar with the standard um, uh, for the D one variance. Um, you have, you know, the proofs before you, the question just is. You know, what the board's view of the application is and um, what conditions the board wants to improve.
Thank you, Mr. Bear.
Mr. Chair, if I could just, I just want to uh add just a couple, two quick points. So I just want to know, obviously, this is a used variance, so the application was presented to the board as a one-story structure where, you know, we're making improvements to that. You know, any change to adding another story or adding a bedroom or something like that may technically constitute, you know, uh, you know, an expansion of the use. Or anything like that. So I just want to make it clear for the applicant that what's being presented to the board is is what's getting approved with the with the use. And then uh, I think, you know, I don't want to create an issue where if a, you know, a homeowner moves in here and they want to put a shed on the property. That they have to come back to the board for a D two use variance. So maybe we can include language about, you know, an accessory shed or something to that, if it's conforming. You know, to setbacks and to the ordinance that they don't, i- it would be permitted without having to come back to the board for a use variance. Would that be proven?
It may, Charlie. That's a good, that's a good recommendation. Should we keep, keep it limited to a hundred square feet or less?
Well, whatever the ordinance requires as far as a residential shed, I mean, we do have lots in town that are smaller than this. So I don't think that we should limit them. I don't think that we should limit them. You know, they would have to comply with the requirements of, of our ordinance with respect to sheds, setbacks, height, size, et cetera.
Right. Mr. Aguirre, do you, uh, do you object?
I don't. Um, in fact, if you like, uh, you could go up to two hundred square feet. That's the cutoff where the building department would get involved. Uh, up until then, uh, it's only a land use application, and I think that would be fair.
Thank you. All right, so Charlie, I agree. We'll put that in.
All right. Yeah, I just don't want to cause issues for the homeowner. I think that's the simplest thing where they, uh, you know, can do what they want and not have to come back to the board.
Makes sense. Mr. Cohen?
Um, yeah, very briefly, Mr. Chairman, uh, through the variances, I rely on the testimony presented by our professionals. I would like to point out a few things that the applicant had agreed to. I did agree to provide a new septic and satisfied the Monmouth County Board of Health. Um, we did agree to reduce the size of the porch and the front yard setback. Uh, we did agree to consolidate the lots into one lot. Uh, and we did, I believe that idea with the shed, uh, was very good from Charlie. I also want to thank Charlie for sharing his screen with that video of the existing conditions. I think that made a big impression on the board. Uh, and I would request that the board grant the variances as requested this evening.
To include the sidewalks, correct?
We could decide on that.
I said the sidewalk, uh, the applicant will do either way. Doesn't, I don't think it matters.
Okay, thank you. So I would then ask the board, what's the pleasure of the board?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, um, I hope I'm not speaking out of my pay grade here, but we have six, and this is a used variance. I think we're all in a positive, uh, mood right now, but I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, Mr. Cohen, you're aware, right? That, okay.
Thank you.
So we'll proceed.
Mr. Cohen, would you like to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Well, saying that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve this. Uh, Mr. Cohen just kind of summed up all of the, all the things that we're looking for beyond the, uh, the testimony. So I would just like to make a motion to approve, sir.
Thank you.
Got a motion by Mr. Hughes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Orozco.
Is that with or without the sidewalk?
Yeah, we need to get that in.
With the sidewalk.
Okay.
That's my motion with the sidewalk, please.
The applicant will construct the sidewalk.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we got a motion. We got a second. Eileen?
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Yes. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir.
You, the applicant and the professionals, thank you.
And thank you all for your time this evening. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Eileen, so that motion, of course, carried. Um, is there any other, other business of the board that you have, Eileen?
I have no more.
Okay. Any of the board members have any questions before we conclude?
No, sir.
Uh, wait, don't, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, when, when are we going live, Eileen? Do you know? Is it April or May?
I think second week of April, I think, second meeting.
April twenty-fifth.
Okay.
April twenty-fifth, we go live.
We have another one in March, virtually, the twenty-eighth, correct?
Yes, and then April eleventh also.
And then April eleventh as well.
Two more Zooms.
Two more Zooms. Zoom zone. It's, it's a little more difficult this way. I, you know, I look forward to having an open forum would be.
Yes, sir. I'll second that motion, sir.
On the con, on the flip side, though, I'm in Connecticut tonight, and I was able to participate.
Well, that works. Absolutely.
I would just also maybe recommend, I haven't spoken to Wendell about how he's doing, but that may factor in as well. And, you know, obviously, we like to have him here and coming back in person may be impacted by his recovery.
That's a good point.
We will check with the chairman. Absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, we have to make some...
Brought that up, absolutely.
Okay. So...
I just wanted, can I say, you'd have to just make a notice, notice, just to let you know.
Yeah, but you... And I think that's something that we could, that can be resolved. That's not something that's not resolvable, but I think Wendell's health is more important, so let's check and make sure he's okay, and then figure out where we're going to go from here.
In the meantime, March twenty-eighth, it's, it's a Zoom, and I look forward to seeing all the board members that can attend beyond the online, so... May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I second it.
Second, Mr. Moretti, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Night.
Take care.